Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the November 1st, 2017 City Council Meeting. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order at 7:00 PM, and our newly-installed chief, Fire Chief Mason Hurley, would you please honor us and lead us in the flag salute?
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chief. It's good to see your family, I haven't seen them in a long time, and, and welcome, not welcome, because you've been here for so many years, but, but congratulations on your promotion. Okay. Roll call, Director Maloney?
Faria.
Here.
Johnson Santos, Lewis, Silbera.
President.
Valalta.
Here. Do you have a quorum? Let's go on to Item 4, Consideration of Approval of Agenda. Do I have a motion? Mr. Silbera.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. Faria.
Second.
Motion by Silbera, second by Faria. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Opposition? None carried. Public forum, members of the public may address as councilmembers on any item that is within the interest of the jurisdiction of the City Council, which includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items, and speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Detailed guidelines are posted on the Council Chamber informational table. And when you approach the podium, please state your name and city of residence. If you have a cellphone, please place them on vibrate or turn them off. Is there anyone who wishes to speak at the public forum?
Yes.
Uh, no noise makers?
Captain with the Salvation Army of Los Banos, and we are here today to make the city aware of the kettle season. Our bell ringing season starts on Monday, November 20th, and we are inviting the public to register to ring and help the Salvation Army raise monies for its 2018 budget season. We are at six locations, and we are online this year, so you may register online and choose your location and your timeframe. We just wanted to make you aware that this fundraising season accounts for 75% of our budget, and we are, as many people are, challenged to continue with the services that we're providing based on budget cuts. So we appreciate greatly your support, and we hope to see you out there. We welcome a celebrity bell ringing day where the city can come out and select a location and ring. We're going out to the schools, having, encouraging a mascot day. We're trying to be creative and invite the public to participate in this, because this is their Salvation Army. What we're trying to do through our services and programs is better the community, the families, support them in whatever area they need. We are going to have a $20 challenge day where we are trying to match a $1,000 donation, and we are also... Let's see another one. Real Estate Wednesday, where we're going to be, the real estate offices of Los Banos will man kettle sites and ring for a day. So those are so far the opportunities we have for the city to help the Salvation Army raise money for the citizens of Los Banos.
And as you guys know, you know exactly what it goes for, you know, our homeless, our seniors, families in need, motels, we... Oh, sorry. Bonnie Roberts.
Just Los Banos.
Yeah, just Los Banos, okay. As you know, our monies stay here. Our monies help for motels, food, we feed, every day, we give enough meals in the basket, in their bags that they pick up for breakfast and a lunch. So, and there's about 25 that come, 15 regular, 25 because we get workers that come in afterwards for food bags. So this helps get our food for, our food boxes each month, our turkey drive coming up, so we just want to be part of this city. We've been in here for a long time, and we continue, we want to continue to stay to help, and our goal is to make sure that every family has a home, whether if it's in this city, or if we have to, you know, exit them out, that, that, that can happen too, you know, because sometimes we have to take them someplace else. Okay? But thank you.
Thank you.
And we hope to see you out there.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at the public forum?
Evening, I'm John Fulton, and I see on the agenda tonight, I'm from Los Banos. We have the MCAG presentation on transportation, so this will be on the, on the agenda tonight for review. So I'd just like to ask the, the council and the mayor, in the next round of planning to 2042, you're looking at the next general plan, don't make the mistakes we made in the last one. As you review the transportation issues for this next general, general plan, make sure you incorporate pedestrians, bicycles, and electric vehicles. So in the next round, between now and 2042, there'll be six countries in Europe that will eliminate internal combustion engines. It's going to be all electric, so we need to have someplace here in Los Banos to attract people with electric vehicles. We also need for schools, some way for children to get to schools that's healthy, rather than breathing the bus fumes and their commuter parents' cars idling. At the new junior high school, I counted 75 to 85 vacant car stalls and only two or three empty bicycle stalls. So we need to look at encouraging the students to get there on their own. We need to look at healthy ways to, to transport people around the city.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Patricia McCoy of Los Banos. I am the chairperson of the Fourth Annual Los Banos Veterans Parade. I'm also a United States Air Force veteran. The Veterans Parade is being held this Saturday, November 4th, at 11 o'clock AM. We're honoring all veterans, but this year's parade is dedicated to Operation Desert Shield and Desert Storm veterans. We once again have been granted permission for the C-130 flyover. That will be at the end of our parade, approximately 12 o'clock noon, and it'll be best seen over the Veterans Memorial Hall. This year is looking like it's going to be a great parade. We have between 55 and 60 entries so far, so.
And Mike Hughes also, with the VFW in Los Banos, I'm the VFW commander, and I live here in Los Banos, have for a lot of years, and we'd just like to thank the council for your help with this, and also invite you afterwards, we're going to have food at the hall, and we, we expect a really good turnout, because we're getting a real good responses here, so come and join us and honor the veterans in Los Banos.
Do you want to tell them about your breakfast, too?
The Ladies Auxiliary is having a breakfast, it's starting from 7 to 9, and it will be, it will be at the Veterans Memorial Hall, 615 East Street. Tickets are $7 a, $7 a breakfast, and, and after the parade, come over, we have, we have some hot dogs and chips, sodas.
Thank you.
May I have permission to give you some flyers?
Yes. Yes, would you give them to our city clerk?
Here.
Yes, I sure will. Go ahead, Mr. Faria.
I want to send my regrets, I have a, we have a family funeral Saturday morning, so I would, as you know, I'm always there, and I would be there otherwise. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you, Mr. Faria. Okay, let, oh, anyone else who'd like to speak to public forum? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public forum and go on to Item 6, Consideration of Approval of Agenda, or Consent Agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered routine, we voted on in one motion, and let's remove from the consent agenda by a city council member. And tonight, we have, Director Maloney?
Items on the consent agenda are as follows, warrant numbers 207325 through 207510, and the amount of $983, I mean, $983,532.02. First quarter investment report for fiscal year 2017, 2018, minutes for the October 18th, 2017 City Council meeting, and the items are to be approved as submitted.
Okay, is there any council member who would like to remove an item for discussion? Director Lewis, or council member Lewis?
No, Mr. Mayor, but if there are no requests for removal of an item, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda and submit it.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second? Mr. Faria.
Second.
Okay, motion by Lewis, second by Faria, I thought we were going to have to wait here. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Let's go on to Item 7, Merced Council Presentation. Chris, oh, Merced College, Merced College Presentation, Chris Vitelli, Superintendent/President.
With emphasis on the slash, thank you.
Great.
Very good. Thank you. Well, good evening, Mayor Valalta, City Council, a privilege to, to present to you tonight. I want to give you an update on what Merced College is up to, as well as what we're doing in this wonderful city of Los Banos. I have with me, as, as you all know very well, Joe Gutierrez, he's our board president, he's here in the audience tonight, sporting his Warriors jacket, but we want to, we want to share some exciting things. We are doing a lot of work here in Los Banos, I've been working with several of you in the city, and so want to give you a bit of a highlight. Two of the items are initiatives that we're doing district-wide, meaning at both the main campus in Merced, as well as at the Los Banos campus here in Los Banos, and that's the Educational Master Plan, and we also have our Guided Pathways Initiative, and both of those will impact this community. And then last but not least, I want to just talk about some of the project programs and exciting happenings right here in Los Banos. I'll start with our Educational Master Plan. We have engaged with a group called the Collaborative Brain Trust, and, and not just because they have a fantastic name, but because they are going to do some good work for our entire district. Every seven to eight years, community colleges engage in master planning, and so this will serve as our framework and our master planning for growth in the next five to seven years for the district. What we'll do once we complete the Educational Master Plan is we'll create our, our Facilities Master Plan and our Strategic Plan. And what that means for Los Banos is, as we look at opportunities for growth in this community, and we look at workforce demand, and we look at industries, and we look at things that matter most to the potential workforce, and the, the existing workforce will begin to expand appropriately. So right now, we're in the data collection stage, and it started last month. We're meeting with constituents throughout our service area, including Los Banos. We'll have a forum here on November 17th, and we'll make sure everyone at the desk gets an invitation to participate in that, and then our consultants will be reaching out to, if they haven't already, some of you with the hopes of sitting down and discussing what the economic forecast is and the, the workforce demand in this area for the next 10 to 15 years, so we can plan accordingly as we look at our educational programs. As I mentioned, Phase 1 started in September, and we will be finishing up Phase 1 really at the end of November, even though it says on your slide Phase 2 starts in November. But Phase 1's really that discovery phase, we're doing surveys and collecting qualitative data. Phase 2 is really putting all that data together so we can start to analyze what's most important to us, and the service offerings, including out here at the Los Banos campus, and I'll speak a little bit about one of the areas we'll be expanding in the next, in the next year, out here in the career technical education arena. And then last but not least, will be our goal-setting, and we'll have specific plans and strategic goals as it relates to our Los Banos campus. So that's one of the, really one of the most important documents we have for planning purposes, and it really does serve as our framework. We encourage anyone in the city to, to please get engaged in that process, work with our dean, Dr. Latham, contact me or others if you have ideas on what we should be doing as it relates to education, specifically, of course, higher education on, in Los Banos. In addition to that, one of the other big initiatives for our district right now is our Guided Pathways Framework, and I think this really will transform how we serve our students. I won't go through each component of Guided Pathways, but the idea is that we're working very closely with students all the way, from the ninth grade level all the way to, to year 16, when they go to and finish hopefully a bachelor's degree, if that's what they want to do. Part of that's creating structured onboarding processes, it's creating a connection with high school students, making sure we have college classes at the high schools, embedded counseling, student services, which we all, we now have at most of your high schools here in this area, but it's also redesigning our curriculum, creating acceleration programs, making sure our students can go right into a college-level English or math if they're qualified to do so. So you'll hear more about this, I think, in the next year, year and a half, but we're doing some good work behind the scenes, and we want to see our students step in, succeed, finish in two years, whether they go straight into the workforce or transfer, we want them to do that in a seamless fashion. If they want to come to us in one semester and get a certificate in welding, that's okay, too. We want to make sure that we, we set them up for success and create stackable programs when they do decide to come back, they can continue on their, their degree path that they so choose. Specifically, what's happening here in Los Banos, at the Los Banos campus, I'll give you a bit of a, an enrollment update, in fact, I'll just start scrolling through these. Our credit headcount here in the district right now, this past year, was about 2,000 students, and that's about 18% of our total enrollment at Merced College. So that's significant for a campus this size to be housing 2,000-plus students, and our Los Banos campus has been growing over the years, and this year's still to be determined, we'll see what the, the end result is, but it's looking positive. The next slide is our full-time equivalent students, so we count enrollments by full-time status, and in Los Banos, our full-time equivalent students total is about 1,200, and that's about 14% of our district. So a significant amount of students are being served here. The top majors in Los Banos are nursing, being number one, criminal justice, number two, and then the transfer degree, the general breadth transfer into the CSU or IGETC system, which is our UC system. After that is liberal studies, that's students wanting to go into the teaching profession for the most part, psychology, business administration, biological science, child development, art and kinesiology. And what we want to do in the next several years is expand our offerings in career technical education. We've got a strong general education program at the Los Banos campus, but we know that our students in this area, based on high school programs and based on the, the data that we receive, we know they want career technical education programs as well. We've actually been working with your city to identify potential locations for a welding lab, so thank you for your assistance on that, and we think we're getting close to identifying a space, and what we want to do is bring our fast-track welding program to the Los Banos community. This will hopefully be the first of many. We're using funds from the state that we're receiving through a strong workforce grant to lease the space for at least three years, make sure there's the demand here, hire a full-time instructor, and open a space for students to get a certificate welding, or excuse me, a welding certificate in one semester. So that will require them to come five days a week, eight to five each day, and they'll finish within 18 weeks. If they want to continue on to the next level, they can go through another 18-week course program, and this is the model of private institutions, it's the model we have on the main campus, and we've got a huge waiting list for it, so I think it'll be a huge success over here. The next slide's a little outdated, actually, I noticed that when I was sitting in the, the audience. We've been, I've talked to many of you about the importance of exploring a safe path for students to get out to our campus, and I've talked with the mayor, I've talked with the city manager, I know that trustee Gutierrez has spoken one-on-one with most, if not all of you, and most recently, we had a meeting at Los Banos campus, several of you were there. MCAG helped facilitate that meeting, and they're here tonight, and we certainly appreciate that. They have approved funds to put out a bid for a scope of work, so we know what it would take to actually put a safe trail, bike trail, walking trail, skateboarding, whatever they want to do, but a safe trail to get out to our campus, and we know from experience in Merced that that makes a big difference. Many of our students don't have vehicles, a lot of them are right now walking along the highway, which isn't safe, and we want to do whatever we can to partner with you all in the county to get a safe path out there. This is a small, this is too small to even try to describe, but you have the slide in front of you. And then last but not least, we've been working on a food forest, we'll invite all of you out to the, the campus for ribbon cutting, and I hope that you'll come in mid-December. It's going to be a wonderful space for our students, it's going to be a great outdoor learning space and learning lab, but also a place that the city can use and organizations in the area to, to host seminars, outside seminars, and we can partner with nonprofit organizations that want to do some, some workshops out there as well. So that's the footprint there, to have an amphitheater, that, the, the right-hand corner is, is dirt, that's what you're looking at, but for us, that's exciting, because it's actually moving in the right direction, and we'll have plants and trees soon. We just opened a student success lab on the campus, invite you to come out there, wrap around services to help students with what they need inside the classroom. And that's my presentation, update on what we're doing. Can I answer any questions?
Chris, please continue to work and advertise MCAG with the bus. Until the footpath becomes a reality, we have an excellent bus system in Merced County, and anything that we can do to stop students from walking out to the college in the interim, I think MCAG is the answer right now, to setting up more dial-a-ride, more, more busing, whatever we need to do, I'm sure MCAG would be on board to make sure that students are safe going out there. And if we could advertise that, that bus program even more, it would be even better for, to let people know, because I'm not sure how many students actually know about it, and maybe print up some schedules just specifically to Merced College.
Yeah, no, good point.
Patrick would love to help you with that.
Yeah.
So since he's the new bus manager, he...
No, a point we'll take, and we actually, a couple of years ago, started getting student equity dollars from the state to help with transportation, and one of the things that we look forward to sitting down with all partners is, what can we do to use some of those dollars to help our students with transportation? We do promote the, the, the schedule right now, but it, it isn't quite diverse enough to get students everywhere they need to be, or convenient, so we'll continue to work with them. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Silbera?
Yes, I know you guys have ag programs over at the, the main campus, do you foresee bringing some ag programs out to the Los Banos campus?
Partly why I put in the presentation about the Educational Master Plan is, because that's what that data will tell us. You know, we, we need to hear from the community, we need to look at the, the data as far as where the jobs are, where, where jobs will be 10 years from now. We know this is an agricultural community, we know we need to expand the offerings in career technical education, but I would be remiss if I bypassed that process, but of course, my hope is in the next 10 to 15 years, we look back and we, we have some very comparable and robust career technical education programs as we build out the Los Banos campus and the Facilities Master Plan there, and continue to look at some of these fast-track CT programs. But ag, mechanized ag, heavy machinery, of course, welding, expanding child development again at some point, looking at those types of programs that can lead to jobs is why we exist, and so we want to make sure those programs align with what the economic needs are here.
Perfect, thank you.
Mrs. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a couple of questions, and, and I'm hearing about, you know, the ag programs that you're possibly looking at starting in areas in industrial arts, but what I'm concerned about is for the future, and we're looking at the success of young kids coming out of two-year colleges, and even some nonprofit programs in the Bay Area that are geared more towards the dot-com industry, and we haven't been able to even think about having any of those jobs in this area, because we don't have the workforce trained for those areas. In Fresno, they have small incubator companies that are looking at their grounds being fertile for bringing in a small company in, in that type of industry, so what is Merced Junior College doing in regards to this particular science area? You've got cybercrime, cybercrimes, which is a big thing, and it's, it's a big market to be open for people to get a job in. The dot-com industry, I'm, I'm trying to see where we're looking towards the future to have our young people have another opportunity to have a higher-paying job.
Yeah, and you made good points, I mean, again, that's what the Educational Master Planning Process is, you know, I'm, I'm not committing us to an ag program, or committing us to a horticultural program, or a cybersecurity program... program or a cybersecurity program until we know what this community needs and wants. And that's what the next six to seven months look like. We're just on the front end of that. So part of that is engaging with all of you, stakeholders in the community, business and industry, working with our high school partners, looking at the pipeline of what programs they're preparing students for. And I've asked the consultants that are working on our educational master plan, because Los Banos is a little different in that you have so many commuters, I don't want them just looking at the data within your area right here, but I also want them looking at the data of where the workforce is commuting to, because we need to be training them as well. And so to your point, we know that cybersecurity is probably third or fourth as far as growing industries and potential opportunities for us in this area. We've already received that data back. And so that most likely will be on the list of the types of programs we're going to look at, expanding to. But that's why we need to let the process play itself out, hear from people like you and others in the community, and make sure we get it right. Because the last thing I want is for us to create programs where, one, we don't have a demand for, because that's not sustainable, and, two, that's not leading to jobs. And, you know, we know qualitatively that some of these jobs exist, but we also need to pull in all the stakeholders to tell us what it is we need in this community, and then we can build out. So we haven't identified any one program besides the welding program that we're going to start. At the end of this year, I'd be happy to come back and share the results from the process for our educational master plan, because it will create that roadmap, and it will allow us to look out two, three, four, 10 years in Los Banos and the programs we're building. And I think it will align quite well with some of the things you've already mentioned.
Well, if, I know you said that you've reached out to our city manager, the mayor, but if you can reach out to the rest of the council via our emails, I'm sure that we will respond to you. I certainly will.
Okay.
Would be happy to.
Yeah, thank you.
Feed you any ideas that I may have.
Okay. Very good.
Thank you.
Will do. You got it. Thank you.
Mr. Feria?
I'm pleased to see everything calls. Of course, I teach out there.
Yeah.
Couple of classes, and it really is, it's an exciting place to be. You have some very, it feels like a college. It has the energy of a serious academic environment. And it's because you have some really excellent professors and you have an excellent student body. And it's a pleasure to teach out there. And expansion of education in all these different realms, because Los Banos is on that bridge. We are in the agricultural world, and our population commutes into the tech world. Those are the two big areas that we have here. Seeing welding class, I know a lot of students leave town, leave state to go study welding. And if we had welding certification here, it'd be great, which ties very closely to ag and industrial, which, and like I said, the valley jobs, and then the technology adding that. So whatever I can do to help from my seat, I'm happy to do, to see education expand, because education is what value, where all the value of anything comes from. We appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
Mrs. Santos?
Hello. I mean, we've spoken in the past concerning the technical programs, so I just, I can't wait to see that come in, because I know that's a big thing, me, myself, being a pharmacy technician, I know it was a huge step for me, so can't wait for that. And also the amphitheater, I think it'll be great. So thank you, sorry to come in the middle of your presentation.
No problem. Thank you. Thank you.
Chris, what's the limitation on accepting more nursing candidates, more nursing students? Is it placement?
Funding and placement are the two. Someone asked me recently what it would take to replicate our nursing program, and that's a question I can't answer. It's too daunting. But for us to expand our nursing program, particularly out in this area, we need clinical sites. They're required by law to have so many hours in the clinical environment and do their clinical practicals. So that's part of it. One of the things that I'd like to see us do, and I'm working with the dean out here, is to utilize the technology we have to better serve the students on this side of the county that would like to go into the nursing profession. The clinical site's going to be very difficult for us, but we can, we can work on that one.
Do we have any placement now at this hospital?
I believe we do, yeah. We have, we have clinical sites in Los Banos. I don't know exactly where they are, but I think we do. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Can you check on that for me?
Yeah, I'll let you know for certain, but I'm 92% sure.
Okay.
Maybe 93. And, but that's really it. It's a clinical site. But the hope would be that we can start doing a small cohort over here of students who can video conference into the lectures there, and then we need to find a place for them to do their clinicals, so. But it's doable. We can expand that.
Well, I'd like to help with that, because I think the nursing program is very beneficial for this community.
Yeah, yeah. Very good.
All right. Any other questions? Well, thank you so much for coming.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
All right. Okay, item number eight, Merced County Association of Governments, MCAG Regional Transportation Plan Presentation. And tonight, we have with us the Executive Director, Patrick Pittinger, and with him tonight is our Transportation Director, Matt Fell.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. My name is Patrick Pittinger. I'm the Executive Director of MCAG, and I'm pleased to be here before you. And just a little overview before I turn it over to Matt to talk about the regional transportation plan, which is one of several really important things we've got going on right now. Just for the benefit of the public, MCAG serves as the metropolitan planning organization, which is the federally required body for the, for Merced County. In addition to that, we also administer Measure V funds, which is, there are now 24 counties in the state that are what's called self-help counties, which is a very important concept because Measure V now provides funding that is generated here in Merced County and can only be used here in Merced County for transportation projects. And it's a very important concept, because at the federal level, transportation funds have been lagging for quite some time, and there isn't any great expectation of improvements. There's always possibilities, but it's very important that these funds are local, they're used locally. And there's a couple of things that make our agency very unique. There are councils of governments all over the state, but ours is quite unique, because in addition to providing those services I just described, we also serve as the Trans Joint Powers Authority for the entire county. We operate the bus system. And additionally, we operate the Regional Waste Management Authority. So two landfills, the Billy Wright landfill and the 59 landfill just north of Merced. And I want to make sure that I point out that on our governing board is your, is your mayor, the Honorable Mike Palalta, and we also have a technical review board. And your city manager sits on that. On a monthly basis, we bring a variety of items that go first before a citizens committee of countywide folks, and then, and then before the technical review board, which includes your city manager and the other city managers and county CEO, and then finally before the governing board, which includes your mayor and other mayors and county board members. With that, I'm going to turn over the mic to Matt Fell, who is our transportation planning expert, and going to tell you about a very important project underway, because, oh, one thing I forgot. The other thing we're unique for is that Measure V passed, and that, obviously, where 24 counties have passed Measure V, but we, we as a county did so without a specified list of projects. And to our knowledge, that is unique. Everybody else we've been able to find has all had a list of projects that was brought to the voters and approved, and we're in a very different situation. We have, the money is now coming in, much of the money goes straight to the municipalities, including Los Banos, but 44% of the money is unobligated. It's up for discussion, review, and that's integral to what Matt's going to tell you about. So with that, I'll turn over to Matt.
Thank you, Patrick. Thank you, Mayor and council members. Again, my name is Matt Fell. I'm a planner with Merced County Association of Governments, here to talk about their regional transportation plan. So what is the regional transportation plan? Well, it's a road to the future. Hopefully, our road to the future will be smooth and not bumpy, and I think that there are some good prospects for that now that there's additional funding, which I'll talk about a little bit. What is the RTP? Well, the regional transportation plan is a long-term plan. It does cover 25 years, so we're looking a long distance out into the future. The main reason for that is some of the big projects take a very long time to plan and design, and then finally build, and getting funding for those can take a very long time. So that's one of the reasons why we look so far out into the future. It is a document that guides transportation investments, so a lot of different types of investments in transportation have to be identified in RTP. We look at regional issues. We look at multiple modes. So we look at, you know, traffic congestion on the highways, we look at road maintenance. We also look at bicycle and pedestrian projects, because those can have a benefit on air quality, and that's a regional issue. We link with land use, housing, and employment. That's very important, that the RTP is based on and serves the growth projections in the general plans. So transportation is there to connect people from where they live to where they work and where they go to school. And so we need to know where those places are going to be in the future, and that's all based on your general plan and the other general plans. And of course, we have to follow numerous federal and state laws, so we do that when we prepare our plan. Regional planning is basically just multiple jurisdictions. So in Merced County, we have the six cities and the county, and all working together through MCAG. So the good news Patrick mentioned, Measure V passing, I have the Measure V pie up there on the screen, I'm going to talk about for a second. And then also SB 1 passed at the state level, which is the gas tax hike. Yes, it's a tax increase, but it's going to pay for a lot of additional transportation dollars, especially fix-it-first-type stuff. So there's a lot of maintenance backlog. Gas tax hasn't been raised in 25 years, so there's a lot to catch up on, and so that's going to provide a lot of additional funds for those kinds of projects. Measure V, as Patrick mentioned, the, there's the orange slices, there's the green slices. The green slices are the local projects. Those projects are decided by this council, the other councils, and the board of supervisors. So there's a formula where those four, those funds are distributed down based on population and road miles to the local jurisdictions, and then this council decides what to do with the Los Banos money. The orange and the yellow slices are the regional projects, and there's two committees. There's a regional projects committee for the east and for the west, and they recommend projects to the MCAG board. And as Patrick mentioned, there's not a list already, so that list is to be developed. And all of those projects in the regional projects have to be identified in the RTP. So that's the link, that's the connection to the RTP. For Measure V regional projects to proceed, they have to be listed in the RTP. How do we do this planning? Well, we do a lot of outreach. Of course, we do a lot of technical work, but we also do a lot of outreach. So we are doing our second round of public workshops right now. We had one in Los Banos here last Monday, and we had one in Livingston last Wednesday, a week ago, and there's one in Merced tomorrow. And we also have an online version of that, which I'm going to talk about, I think, on the next slide. And we're going to get as much feedback as we can, and we have some surveys on the website, and all that information, and the preferences and the thoughts of the public, we're going to bring all that to our standing committees and to our board, so that they can make a decision on which scenario to carry forward into our, the rest of the plan, basically to prepare the draft plan. So we're looking at releasing the draft plan in the spring, and then it'll be available for adoption in the summer. That's basically our timeline. We've also been doing a lot of presentations. Our outreach consultant has done several presentations here to community groups in Los Banos and throughout the county, again, to get the word out on this planning process and to let people know how they can get involved. And one of the, here's the workshops again that I mentioned last week and the one tomorrow in Merced. We also have one on Monday in Planata that we added. And at these workshops, people are looking at all the information for these scenarios, and they get to vote on their preferred scenario, and they also get to vote on some other things, including some of the big regional projects. So that's, that's a good way for folks to get involved and learn about the process, and also make their voice heard in their vote on, you know, what, what scenario should be considered. And I want to let you know that our website, which is mercedregionalvision.com, we have a survey on there. It's on there now. So it's basically replicating all the things that are happening at the workshop. A lot of people are not able to attend a workshop, so we provide the online survey, so people can see there all the information. There is quite a bit of information. One, there's a lot to digest, but it's a lot of good information. There's pictures, there's graphs to help, hopefully help explain all that. And then you get to take a survey, and all those survey results will be compiled, as I said, and brought to our board. And then, of course, you will be included in, when we release the draft, we'll let you know about that, and there'll be an opportunity for comment, and there'll be another round of workshops and open houses in the spring. And with that, we have my contact information. If you have questions about the RTP at any time, let me know. And we also have our outreach manager, Kendall Flynn, doing those presentations and helping get the word out.
Matt, there are, I was talking to Patrick, there are other pots of money, like the STIP, money from the state, and also some money left over in the RTIF. Are we going to kind of wait to see all the projects and then, so we can do multi-funding from, from different levels to see how to fund these projects, and how this is going to be distributed, the money's going to be distributed, and, and wait for that list in June to kind of put everything together?
Kind of, yeah. I'm glad you brought that up. Yeah, a, a big part of the RTP is that list, and multiple lists, actually, probably this time, of different kinds of projects. And we do want to collect all the information from all the jurisdictions of all the possible regional projects, again, so that they can be there to be talked about and discussed going forward with Measure V. But also, and this is key, to identify the need for those other funding sources. So there is quite a bit of money out there that hasn't been available for a number of years, but it's available now. And so now's the time to get those lists in our RTP, so that when opportunities come up, opportunities that exist now and opportunities that may be coming soon, we have projects that are, you know, either in development or ready to go.
Well, I'm glad to hear that, because that'll make it fair for every jurisdiction, and east side and west side, and so, so that's good news. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Mrs. Lewis?
Don't leave yet.
Yeah.
I noticed at the last meeting, we had pretty much the same cross-section of people that come to these types of meetings in Los Banos. One of the things that I have concern about in the outreach to our residents here is, number one, the time of the meeting, because we have a large community of people who do commute. And number two, just exactly how your organization is going to get the information out there to the public, so that, number one, they know there's an online survey, and number one, number two, how are they going to find out? You know, there has to be some sort of mechanism that you're going to use to get a good cross-section of people to possibly take that survey. So I appreciate the fact that there is a survey online, but I want to know how that information is going to reach the public.
Sure. So we do, we have a number of channels that we get the word out. You know, we, we put it on our Facebook and our Twitter and our website. Any help we can get from the jurisdictions or anybody, quite frankly, who wants to help us with that outreach effort, especially online and mobile and those kinds of things, those are really beneficial, help get it out to exactly the kinds of folks who wouldn't be able to come to a workshop. So we appreciate any help that can be provided there. We do have our flyers. We've been talking about these workshops for over a month, you know, that the dates have been available. We have our newsletter. We have all sorts of connections that way.
Have you thought about doing a mass mailer? Through the postal system, you don't have to have the name and address of a particular person to do a mass mailer. You could just pick X amount of people in a certain address area and send out a mailer so that they can have the information to know that either there is an online survey or that there is another meeting coming up in the springtime. Not everybody knows that you've got a website, that there's a project going on in regards to transportation for the future, but if you send them something, you know, I'm pretty sure you're going to maybe get a better response via online for the survey that you have for people who may not be able to come to a meeting. So I'm just looking at some way that your organization can spend a little bit of money to get the information out to the residents in Los Banos, so that they have an opportunity to participate and not be left out of the circle of what's being, what's happening with this survey, and participating in what their desires are for future transportation from the west side. So that's just kind of my take on it. I, I really get a little bit discouraged knowing that, you know, there's Facebook and all these things out there, but you have to know that there's something on that site or that there is that particular site that someone needs to go to to find out about this important event that's getting ready to happen in the future for transportation for our area. So that's another way of doing it, is, is to mail it out to a certain number of people that you can figure out the demographics and figure out who's going to respond to you in regards to a survey and future meetings. And thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Matt, maybe Merced College could help you a little bit with that, too, in getting the word out to the students, and maybe talk about some surveys over there in some of the classes. So, okay. All right. Any other... All right. Any other comments from council? Well, thank you both for coming this evening. We really appreciate it. Come back, okay? Thank you. Okay, let's go on to item nine, public hearing. If you challenge a proposed action described in, described herein in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described herein or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Item 9A, public hearing, to receive public comment and consideration of an amendment to Title IX, Chapter III, Article 28 of the Los Manos Municipal Code relating to signs. And we're going to have a presentation for our Community and Economic Development Director, Elms.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. So, I'm going to keep this brief, as you may recall, back in, on the 28th, excuse me, the 18th of October, the City Council waived the first reading and introduced ordinance number 1158 for the amendment to the sign ordinance back on that date. So, just to recap, there is a minor amendment that we are asking at this time, that the proposal consists of sign alterations and minor adjustments. It also includes adding language specifically to automobile dealership signage, allowing criteria for that special type of use, as those uses don't have a building to advertise with, their advertisement is outdoors, as their operations are outdoors. And then, there's also temporary signs, other than windows, that are also wind-blown devices. And then, we also talked about portable signs, A-frame and I-frame signs, and the change there that has a size restriction, as well as requirement that applies to all zoning districts. And then, we did include language based on the discussion, City Council discussion on the 18th, that requires A-frame and I-frame signs to be professionally designed and constructed of durable materials. So, with that, staff is requesting that the City Council would open the public hearing and receive public testimony, and then waive the second reading and adopt ordinance number 1158 by title to amend the sign ordinance as presented. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. If there are no comments from council at this time, I would like to open the public hearing and receive public comment on ordinance number 1158, amending Title IX, Chapter III, Article 28 of the Los Manos Municipal Code relating to signs. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on that subject? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public hearing, bring it back to council level. And do I have questions or a, a motion? Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Just one thing, when we heard the first reading on this at our last meeting, one of the requests that I made is that we send out notification to our business community. We had an issue before where we had a lot of non-compliance with our current sign ordinance, and it became necessary to notify the business community of exactly what was expected. So, I would like to make sure that that would be part of the requirement that, that our staff would do, along with the approval of this ordinance this evening, is to send out a mailer to our business community, so that they will have copies of what our, our new ordinance and code will be for signs.
Counsel, any complaints? Good with that?
Okay.
All right.
So...
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. Mrs. Lewis, are you finished?
Yeah, I was just going to make a motion, but I think Mr. Silvera, Silvera has a statement he...
Okay. Mr. Silvera.
Just, so I'm clear on what Mrs. Lewis is asking? That, that's not part of the ordinance, that's just directing staff to...
Just directing staff to...
We're not including it in the motion?
No.
Yeah.
Thank you.
But I just want to make sure that it was understood, that I had mentioned it at the last meeting and, and requested that, but our city attorney indicated that we should wait until this meeting to make that request.
Okay. Alex? Stacy, we good?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we're good. All right, Mrs. Lewis?
Okay, so with that, I'd like to make a motion to waive the second reading of ordinance number 1158 as read by title.
Okay. Do I have a second? Mrs. Santos?
I second that.
Motion by Lewis, second by Santos, to waive the second reading of ordinance number 1158. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, and before we move forward, I really want to appreciate, I appreciate, I want to thank the staff and our city attorney for moving forward on this. I appreciate the time and effort that you've put into this, to include our whole community in regards to this particular area on the signs. And with that, I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number 1158 as read by title.
Mrs. Santos?
Second that.
Okay, motion by Lewis, second by Santos, for the adoption of ordinance number 1158. Director Maloney?
Freya?
Yes.
Johnson, Santos.
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Silvera?
Yes.
Yes, motion carried. It's gone to item B, public hearing, to receive public comment and consideration of conditional use permit and sequo exemption to allow the use of a type 47 alcohol license for the on sale, on sale and general alcohol in conjunction with a bona fide eating establishment for El Campesinos Restaurant and Bar located at 1639 East Pacheco Boulevard, APN 083130013. We'll go back to Economic Director, Economic, Community and Economic Director, Elms.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council, again. So, a little bit of background and history on this particular project and applicant. So, this particular business, El Campesinos Restaurant and Bar, they are also formerly known as Tacos Campesinos. They were previously located at 651 I Street. They had been operational at that location since 2012, and operated with a type 41. And then, in January of 2016, they were approved by the Los Manos City Council for a type 47. Just to describe again, what a type 41 is, is the on-sale of beer and wine in conjunction with an eating place. And a type 47 is the on-sale of general alcohol in conjunction with an eating place. The project site that is before you tonight, 1639 East Pacheco Boulevard, was the former location of LB Steakhouse. That particular business left in 2000, excuse me, September of this year, and had been operational since May of 2014 with a type 41. So, they were with on-sale beer and wine only. And historically, this particular project site has operated with a type 47. As folks may recall, this was the location of Chalet Basque, and prior to that, before that, that it operated as a bar as well. So, the applicant is requesting to intensify the alcohol license from a type 41 that is existing now to a type 47. The Planning Commission, on October 11th, recommended approval with the proposed conditions of approval that are included within your staff report to the Los Manos City Council. So, the proposal before you tonight is a request for a type 47. Again, this is general alcohol in conjunction with an eating place. This would be for a new business location, as they're relocating. They'd be open seven days a week, Sunday through Thursday, conditioned to be operational 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM, and then Friday and Saturday, 9:00 AM to 2:00 AM. They would be serving breakfast, lunch, and dinner. They're located within the Highway Commercial Zoning District, and they are surrounded by various commercial uses and legal non-conforming residential uses that are within a 300-foot radius of this particular project site. This is the location of 1639 East Pacheco Boulevard. So, it is, as I stated, located within the Highway Commercial Zoning District. There is a, the Maple Inn, Maple Inn, excuse me, that is to the southwest of this project site. There's non-conforming residential uses to the south and southeast, as well as the vacant Lost Margaritas Building. And then, to the north is residential, non-conforming residential uses, and a veterinary hospital clinic, as well as Circle K. According to SEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act, this project would be categorically exempt per Article 19, Section 15301, in that it is an existing facility, and the use of alcohol will not expand the floor print of the building. General criteria, so according to our municipal code, a conditional use permit must have certain findings in order to be approved. The municipal code requires three general findings that must be made, and I will briefly go through them. It has to be in conformance with the general plan in the municipal code, would not be nuisance or detrimental to the public health, safety, morals, comfort, and general welfare, and that the use is compatible with adjacent uses, properties, and neighborhoods. Then, the municipal code goes on to require four specific findings when a conditional use is proposed for alcohol and the sale of alcohol. So, the first finding is that the use would not contribute to the undue proliferation of such uses in an area where additional ones would not be desired. Two, that the proposal will not adversely affect churches, temples, synagogues, schools, or recreational facilities. Three, that the proposal would not interfere with the movement of people. And four, that the proposal, if it is in close proximity to residential uses, would be limited in the hours of operation. These findings are listed within the staff report, but staff has concluded that the location is not in the immediate vicinity of any sensitive uses such as churches, schools, or recreational facilities, and that the use of the alcohol license is ancillary to the primary use of the restaurant, and that the operational characteristics of the restaurant are intended to preserve the public health, safety, and welfare of the persons and property in the vicinity, and that conditions of approval have been incorporated to protect those, those rights. And that the project is located on Pacheco Boulevard, and also that conditions of approval have been incorporated that ensure that the proposal would not interfere with the movement of people. And it is not in the immediate vicinity of residential uses, but as you can see, as I stated, we are limiting the hours of operation. The applicant did request to have seven days a week operations till 2:00 AM, and we restricted that use Sunday through Thursday, only till 10:00 PM, as there are residential uses within a 300-foot radius. But we did allow their request as conditioned to Friday and Saturday to operate until 2:00 AM. So, the census tract that this particular project is located in is 23.02, and the census tract map is located for you on the screen. So, the city is divided into four census tracts, and as you can see, 23.02, in terms of land mass, is the largest census tract. It does have all of the businesses that are located east of, on Pacheco Boulevard, within this particular census tract. And within this particular census tract, there are five on-sale licenses currently in use. As a, it would have been, if we had looked at that report from the Alcohol Beverage Control Board back in September, we would have seen six. But this particular location, this project site at 1639 East Pacheco Boulevard, Los Manos Steakhouse, LB Steakhouse surrendered their license. So, we technically don't see a new license, as that license has been operational there at that particular project site. They, it's no longer active as they surrendered it, so ABC no longer recognizes that location as having an active license. So, this is the location of 1639 East Pacheco Boulevard. This is a photo from Pacheco facing east. So, public comment, a public hearing notice was published in the Los Manos Enterprise on October 20th, 2017, and as of the date of this report, no comments have been received. So, with that, staff is recommending that the City Council adopt Resolution Number 5908 to approve conditional use permit number 2017-03, as conditioned for the use of a type 47 alcohol license at 1639 East Pacheco Boulevard for El Campesinos Restaurant and Bar. And that concludes my presentation. Representative of the restaurant is here to answer any of your questions.
Stacy, what about security system, camera system?
So, condition of approval is included. That particular condition, and I do, that's a great question, Mayor, and I do want to highlight that particular condition. This condition requires that the applicant operator shall have HD-quality monitoring cameras with 4K, 1080p resolution in the exterior and interior of the restaurant at all times to the satisfaction and approval of the police chief. The applicant shall always maintain the surveillance equipment and working order, and keep the video recordings for 30 days to be made available to law enforcement upon request. So, that does require security. It is to the satisfaction of our police chief. The business license will not be issued for the operation of alcohol without the satisfaction of the police chief.
So, the chief will sign off on, so if there are any blind spots with the camera, and the chief feels, and then, he can have, it has to be to his satisfaction?
Yes.
Okay. Absolutely perfect. All right. Any other questions from council before I open up the public hearing? Okay, I would now like to open the public hearing on City Council Resolution Number 5908, the approving of conditional use permit number 2017-03 for the use of a type 47 alcohol license on the on-sale of general alcohol, and in conjunction with the eating establishment, El Campesinos Restaurant and Bar located at 1639 East Pacheco Boulevard. For anyone who wishes to speak? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public hearing, bring it back to council level, and is there any questions or a motion? Silvera?
Mr. Mayor, let me get back to my front page. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve City Council Resolution Number 5908 as read by title.
Okay, do I have a second? Mr. Freya?
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Silvera, second by Freya, to approve City Council Resolution Number 5908. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Thank you. Okay, item C, public hearing, to receive public comment and consideration on a moratorium temporarily prohibiting new massage establishments, or relocation or expansion of existing massage establishments within the city of Los Manos, pending study and adoption of regulatory and zoning standards. And we'll go, again, to Community and Economic Development Director, Elms.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to defer this particular presentation to our city attorney, Mr. Vaughn.
Okay. Ms. Vaughn?
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, audience, you'll be disappointed that I do not have a PowerPoint tonight. And I will try to walk you through the staff report. I think it's fairly straightforward and self-explanatory. Couple of comments about it. About 10 years ago, the state of California, the legislature and their infinite wisdom apparently was lobbied pretty hard by the Massage Council lobby, and it ended up the adoption of Senate Bill 731, which essentially took away regulatory powers of the cities over massage establishments, and centralized it with a agency called the California Massage Therapy Council, which meant that no longer did the city license massage establishments or massage therapists, and had very limited regulatory control... or massage therapists and had very limited regulatory control over the manner in which these businesses were operated within the cities. So fast forward about eight or nine years, come to find out that was a really bad idea. In those eight or nine years, massage establishments proliferated, not so much in Los Banos, but we have seen some growth. And with that, and with the centralized oversight by this agency in Sacramento, cities began to experience significant problems in crime, prostitution, those types of things that go along with bad actors who have these massage establishments. So in 2015, cities banded together and through the California League of Cities promoted Assembly Bill 1147, which was passed, which restored most but not all of the local regulatory control to the cities of these types of establishments. So the city of Los Banos' massage establishment ordinance is about 20 years old. It predates both of those legislative bills that were passed and is somewhat outdated in terms of what the current law is. Los Banos has seen an uptick during that interim period of time in terms of the number of massage establishments, and most recently has seen an uptick in code violations, criminal activity, and those types of things connected to some of those establishments, not all of them. And so we thought that it was time for us to kind of take a breath and update our code sections dealing with the massage establishments. And in the interim, while we're doing that and studying the correct way to move forward to regulate these businesses within what's allowed by Assembly Bill 1147, that we declare a moratorium in order to kind of take a deep breath, set it aside, and move forward. So what we're doing tonight is requesting an interim urgency ordinance that would put a stop to any new establishments or the expansion of any existing establishments until we can kind of take a look at what this law will allow us to do in terms of regulations of regulating of these businesses. If this is adopted tonight, you also will have an opportunity to extend the moratorium by up to two years if we come back with specific findings as to why we should do that and why we can't act within 45 days. The intent of staff is to come back to you, honor about 45 days with a new ordinance, which will set up new regulations regarding these establishments, so hopefully the moratorium will only be in place for 45 days, but it may need to be extended a little bit if we can't get that up and running in time. So with that, this is a little bit different process than what you're used to. The government code allows us to adopt one of these urgency ordinances by a four-fifths vote of the city council without the normal introduction and second reading. So if you decide to go forward tonight, the correct process would be to introduce the ordinance, and it's not a first reading, excuse me, not introduce the ordinance, is to waive the first, waive the reading of the ordinance, I'm sorry, waive the reading of the ordinance by separate motion, and then by roll call vote, adopt the ordinance as read by title.
Two actions.
Two actions.
Okay.
It doesn't require a second reading, and actually the ordinance takes effect the minute that it's adopted, so, and it terminates in 45 days unless extended by another vote of four-fifths of the city council. So in the discussion point of the staff report, you'll notice that we have, we have some concerns in terms of the increase in illicit activity in some of these establishments and our inability to regulate those with our current massage establishment ordinance, and that's what we're going to try to get a handle on and do a better job with a better tool to regulate these establishments in the future. So that's the purpose of the moratorium. It's, like I said, it's temporary, and it's in anticipation of us coming up to meeting the requirements of the new law and doing what we feel is necessary for the local agency, the city, to regulate these types of businesses. So I know if you have any specific questions on some of the problems, the chief is here and he can answer those. This is pretty straightforward, I believe. It's not going to put anybody out of business. It's currently in business. It's just going to mean that we're not going to issue a business license or allow any new establishments to come online until we have our ordinance onboard. So I can answer any questions if you like.
Okay, thank you. Do you want me to open up the public hearing? Do you want to ask a question first? Sure, go ahead.
Ms. Vaughn, so 45 days puts it, by my math, around December the 15th, so you would need, if you didn't have it done by the December 6th meeting, you would have to ask for an extension there as, because there's talk that...
Yeah, we would probably be back to you in the first meeting in December with an extension and a, an update on where we are in our review and study of the new regulations.
And so we'd probably be looking at it more like in January.
Correct.
Very good, that's all I had. And then it's 45 days, not business days.
Calendar days, correct.
Thank you.
Mrs. Lewis.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, it was the same question.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, because we have a weird month in December. I think we only have one meeting in December. Any new ordinance would require two readings. It's really a chance for us to kind of gather as the applicable staff people to figure out what we're going to do, report to you on, in that December meeting as to what we're finding and what we're anticipating, and ask you to extend it again, but I don't see that we would be extending this moratorium for two years. That's not our intent, at least at this point in time.
Okay. All right, I will now open up the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on urgency interim ordinance establishing a temporary moratorium in massage establishments, Ordinance Number 1159? Anyone wish to speak? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public hearing, bring it back to council level, and the first action is to waive the reading. And Mr. Silveira.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to waive the reading of Ordinance Number 1159 as read by title.
Okay, do I have a second? Ms. Freya.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Silveira, second by Freya to waive the first reading. The first reading of Ordinance Number, no, I'm sorry, wait, wait, let me restate that. Waive the reading of Ordinance Number 1159. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Mr. Silveira.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Ordinance Number 1159 as read by title.
Mr. Freya.
Second.
Motion by Silveira, second by Freya to adopt Ordinance Number 1159. Director Maloney?
Freya?
Yes.
Johnson Santos?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Silveira?
Yes.
Falwalta?
Yes, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, staff. Okay, let's go on to Item 10, Advisory to Public Notices, One Report. Community and Economic Development Director, Elms.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So on November 6th, 2017, at 5:00 p.m. at the community center lounge, we will be holding a public meeting, and this particular meeting would be to solicit citizen input on possible activities to be included in an application for the state community development block grant, CDBG program. The NOFA this year, the Notice of Funding Availability, is set at a maximum application limit of $5 million, and there's various program activities that the city can apply for, and we're soliciting public input into what activities the city should apply for this particular go-around. That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Okay, let's go on to City Manager Report. Mrs. Trazas.
Congratulations, Mason. It's great to see a great turnout for your badge pinning. It's a pleasure to meet your folks, so thanks for bringing them, and look forward to working with you, and it looks like you've settled right into your new spot, so, thanks, chief.
Hey, let's go on to City Council Member Reports. Tonight, we'll start with Mrs. Lewis.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to let the audience know and people who are watching by television that I had the opportunity to attend the Peace for Family Domestic Violence Walk on October the 26th. It was an extraordinary turnout this year. We had a lot of young people who came, and it wasn't, we didn't end up at the police annex this year, we went to the community center. And there were a lot of organizations there with information and some games for, you know, the young people to play, so it was a really great turnout this year, and the testimony of one lady was very heart-rendering, and it really touched me. But it always does to hear how people who suffer through domestic violence are able to finally get enough strength to move forward and flee from the clutches of that particular event and move on with their lives and accomplish some really successful things in life. So I really want to thank that organization for all they do for the residents here in Los Banos, and would encourage them to support the organization. They're located in our police annex building on J Street. I also had the opportunity to attend the retirement dinner for our former chief, Tim Marison. It was a really good turnout, and again, I want to wish him well. I really enjoyed working with the former chief, and I'm hoping to see that relationship continue with our new chief. Congratulations on your appointment as well. Habit Burger has finally had its opening, and it's been something I've been waiting for, for quite some time, and they had a soft opening, I think it was last Thursday, but I've had the opportunity to frequent them at least two times since that particular date. And for those of you who like In-N-Out, I think this is a little bit superior to In-N-Out. You have various forms of breads that are grilled slightly in butter, which makes the flavor enhanced. You can get a lettuce wrap hamburger. They offer sweet potato fries, onion rings, as well as regular french fries, and for the healthy people, they have salads as well. So if you haven't tried habits yet, go develop yourself a habit and enjoy the food. It's really great.
Are they still open?
All the time.
No, I mean now?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, okay.
You can go after the meeting.
Okay.
I might see you there. That's it for tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's go on to Mr. Silveira.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Again, congratulations, chief. Look forward to many more years of you serving at that post, so congratulations again. So I just want to put a special thank you to staff. I know with the veterans parade coming up, we had some issues with our insurance company changing things on us kind of midstream, and caused a little bit of panic on the veteran side of things and trying to match up what kind of insurance they needed to have to satisfy our RMA. So I wanted to thank Stacy and Bill for getting to the bottom of, and making sure that we were able to satisfy those insurance needs, and the veterans parade will continue to go on. Then the last thing that I want to ask Stacy about, and maybe, I don't know if this comes back in form of a presentation or what, but it was recently brought to my attention that Los Banos is lacking in our efforts to try to bring a homeless shelter to Los Banos. In other jurisdictions, they're opening up a homeless shelter, and so Stacy, when, it's been, maybe, I don't know how long ago, maybe it was last year, if you could refresh our memory on our strategy where we were trying to apply for some CDBG block grants, actually went out, talked to a property owner, tried to purchase a piece of property, and, you know, I just, listen, the homeless folks out there, you know, they're the people that everybody just wants to forget about, right? You know, because of your own, I don't know what the word is, but you tend to forget about them. They are amongst us, and they have been for a long time, and, you know, we try to do everything that we can do, and we're, as a city, we're not forgetting about them. We have programs in place, and there's a lot of nonprofits in town, there's a lot of church groups in town that provide services for these folks all the time. And as a city, we're trying, and I specifically remember that case because it was the gentleman that owned the property, bought the property maybe at the height of the market, and what the grant would allow us to pay, the money that we were able to, would be able to apply for the grant with, there was, this gentleman, there was no way. I think he wanted to do it, it's just that he would have been selling the property at a loss, he would have still owed money on it. So I just wanted to be known out there, and so Stacy, if you could, I don't have to do it tonight, but maybe at a future council meeting, bring back some of the things that we're working on and that we have been working on. And that's all I have for tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. And for clarification, it was permanent housing we were working on, not a homeless shelter?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, let's go on, thank you, Silveira. Let's go on to Mr. Freya.
Thank you.
Peace for Families Night, beautiful event, my choir kids sang, kind of interesting. We did a Jamaican piece, and the DJ was from Jamaica, coincidentally, and he was very, very impressed with our Jamaican music. So it was a lovely evening for a lot of support for people in a very, very difficult situation. We thank all the people for putting that on and inviting us to sing, inviting the community there, and we had hot dogs and goodies and whatnot, games, prizes, so it's a great, great event. Veterans Parade Saturday, once again, I offer my regrets, a family member has died, I have a funeral to attend, otherwise I would be there. Our veterans, of course, have served our country, and it's a great honor for them, a great way of honoring them Saturday. And then, Tim, if you're still listening, Chief Marison, probably fishing by now, thank you, congratulations, Mason, looking forward to many more years. I know that I had the chance of teaching, assisting Mr. Wilburn with the band years ago, and Mason was a baritone player, and Mr. Wilburn, I'm sure, was very proud to watch both of his students pass the fire chief from one to the next. And Tim, for those who don't know, Tim, Chief Marison was a drum major. So as a music teacher, it makes us very proud to see our music, our musicians grow up and serve the world, and we thank, we're very grateful for that. And I think that's all I have for tonight. I guess we had a nice, safe Halloween, I didn't hear, all I heard was good, and so I know it was a lot of fun for us because we have two grandbabies, and that's the highlight of our life. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Santos.
I wanted to congratulate Chief Hearn. I know you're doing a wonderful job, and I can't wait to sit down with you and listen to hear anything you have to say about your future plans. I also want to say thank you to Chief Marison, also if he is still listening, and thank you for your service, and it was also nice sitting down with you as well. I want to say I'm looking forward to the Veterans Day Parade. I was able to help them sell some tickets to help raise money for this parade. My husband is a veteran, so I'm looking quite forward to see what they've got, so thank you very much.
Okay, Mason, another local person, fantastic, congratulations. Okay, former chief Marison, retired chief Marison, you know, he's looking forward to spending time with his grandkids, hunting, fishing, spending time more with family. It's a great opportunity for him, and he's served the city well for 30-plus years, and we wish him a very happy retirement. I attended, they had the, a safe alternative to Halloween last night at three of the churches, and I attended three, the three that I... and I attended three that I knew of, and if I missed some, I'm sorry. But I have to tell you that the pastors and the parishioners of this community organized such a safe event and alternative to trick-or-treating where kids were safe, they had games, they had activities, candy, and all at the local churches. I can't tell you what a well-organized group it was in all three of the events that I attended, and I really appreciate for our community, the dedication and the effort to put forth by these individual churches to make sure that everyone had a safe Halloween. So thank you, and I've asked one of the pastors to get, to collect all the names for me so we can honor them at a future city council meeting, which I think is just absolutely imperative for all the good works that these religious groups do. So thank you so much. And the Vets Parade, don't forget, there's a breakfast on Saturday morning from 7:00 to 9:00 a.m. for $7 at the Vets Hall, and then they're going to sponsor a lunch. So please, before the Vets Parade and after the Vets Parade, there'll be food available. So with that, there is no closed session tonight, so we'll skip the reading of that agenda item and go on to item 14. Adjourn to city to 6:00 p.m. Tuesday, November 7th, 2017, at the Community Center Grand Room located at 645 Seventh Street, Los Bana's, California, to conduct a transportation program and associated funding workshop for the city of Los Bana's. And, you have a motion? Yeah. So do I have a motion to do that? Mr. Silveira.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we adjourn to Tuesday, November 7th as stated by you.
Okay, Mrs. Johnson-Santos?
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been motioned by Silveira, second by Johnson-Santos, to approve item 14 as read by title. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Any further business? Meeting adjourned at, what time is it? 8:29.